And Merck Building 41, applicants are here. Both been reviewed by the Township Planning Commission. We've received reports from all the consultants and the County Planning Commission. Megan has the reviews and it's, they are scheduled on page two, item 18 and 19 for action, the other action items tonight for you a little bit later in the meeting. Do you have questions of me so far? But that's, okay. So two, new items, 203 Church Road, that's a land development, two warehouse buildings having a total of about 166,000 square feet. It's on a, a property presently developed as part of the Triumph Controls Site. For those of you that knew the township. So part of that site is going to be repurposed, if you will, for a two-building warehouse. It's in the very early review stages and Planning Commission and consultants are in the process of doing the review on that application. It's in the LI District. It's consistent with zoning and dimensional variances that were granted by the zoning hearing board last year. Next bullet, text amendment. It's a minor sort of, we call it a housekeeping amendment to the C Commercial District and some definitions to, we think, to provide for better understanding and regulation of a convenience store and providing some additional standards for convenience stores like a Wawa, like a Rural Farms when they're presented for a, for approval before the township. So this is a text amendment that will probably, I guess, perhaps be on next month. I can review it briefly. It's about a paragraph and it talks about simply better definition for convenience store, what is included, what is not included, minimum and maximum size. It establishes some parking ratios which we think are better. Rural Farms and Wawa have voluntarily met all these standards, as it turns out. We felt that we should make them a part of the zoning code in the event we get an applicant that's not so agreeable. So that'll be on the agenda, on your agenda perhaps, and in the next month or two. And then finally, one new ZHP. We cleared out one of the highest number, 27 new appeals for 2023. That was the highest that I can remember in the last 10 years that they're done. So now we have one new one, 500 Shearer Street. It's a corner property. It is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. It's, it's undersized by 50%. It is sort of protected and under the regime of non-conforming lot strictures in the, in zoning. And it basically means that so long as you meet the lot, so long as you meet the use that's permitted, which is single-family, you have a right to ask the zoning hearing board, which they have, for dimensional relief to build a house on that lot. So it would be a single-family house at the first block, if you will, of Shearer Street in Upper Gwinnett Township. That'll be on in, in this, this month. We don't have it down, but when is it, Mark? In two weeks? I think. It's, it's on, it's, it's two Tuesdays from tonight. Questions of me? Okay, thank you.
Number nine, I'm going to now turn it over to Nick Cross, engineering.
Thank you. So this evening, the authorization for bidding for the West Prospect Ave Drainage Project will be offered consideration for approval. So I just wanted to give a quick background on the project, why we're doing it and what we will be doing. So the project takes place, you guessed it, along West Prospect Avenue between Sunnytown Pike and Highland Avenue. The current area experience is a lot of stormwater runoff. There's not really any stormwater infrastructure on that stretch. There's a little bit on the, the southern side, but pretty much none on the northern side. So our goal is just to install some inlets and stormwater piping to capture that runoff and convey the water underground until it reaches the, the recently installed basin as part of the development that was installed or built a few years ago in that area. So that project's going to be bid out later this month. The design's pretty much complete and construction's looking to take place sometime in the spring. And that's all, if anybody has any questions.
I have a question. Several years ago, and maybe, I don't mean to put, there's a resident here that might be able to help me recall the exact dates. They put in sidewalks in there?
Mm-hmm.
And they did a lot of work in that, in that area. And one of the reasons was because of the flooding and, and children needing to walk to school. So you're talking on the St. Rose side?
I believe so. It's the North, the North Wales side is where most of the, the water is coming from, especially up toward the, I guess, the St. Rose, is that the church up at the end of the street?
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of runoff comes from that area. So all of that water's just kind of been flowing down the street. We're just looking to pick it up and move it along.
I, I thought this was all addressed years ago when they did that sidewalk. That was before your time standard too, but I-
Was that, when you say they, do you mean North Walesboro sidewalk project?
No, that's still Upper Gwinnett in there. And it, I believe it was something with what the kids walking to school, safer routes to school. So they added their sidewalks. And I thought when they did that sidewalk work that they also were including, because they were building these sidewalks and, and all of that was already taken care of. But I guess not, since this is happening and we have to do this.
I mean, it definitely is still sheeting across and causing a pretty big issue.
Yeah. Well, not that I've seen a lot of sheeting of ice in the past couple of years, you know, but stays that way. But I, I just recall, I just thought that that was, a lot of that was taken care of and then with the new builder. So I was surprised to read that on here tonight. But if we make it safer for there's children walking and everybody, then, okay, thank you, Nick.
And Commissioner McNaney, we are, we are installing infrastructure that will pipe to that new basin, right, Nick?
Yeah. So the new basin was sized for, all of that water's still getting to that basin right now. It's just making its way down the street and across the street to get to that one inlet down there. So well, all we're doing is installing inlets and stormwater piping further upstream so that it's capturing it earlier, so it's not all flowing down the street.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Moving on to number 10, assignment of the liaison positions. Before I do the assignments, I just wanted to take a moment to publicly thank the public safety, Chief Duffy, Chief Geiger, Chief Wheeler, and our fire marshal, Connor. For the last four years, they have worked diligently with me, answering all of my questions. And as a new commissioner, understanding the whole liaison role was quite new to me because I came from education. And they spent countless hours answering all of my questions, clarifying questions, everything from showing me around the different stations to how they hire de-escalation practices, professional development. So I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to the public safety and just to let everyone know that, you know, part of being a liaison, you really don't know what you're getting yourself into. But it's, it's really a so satisfying participating as a commissioner, as a liaison, and I just wanted to say thank you. So for the assignment of the liaison positions, finance, personnel administration is myself, public safety, Commissioner Hall. She has police and fire. And now, over the last two years, we've added fire marshal services and VMSC with Chief Shane Wheeler. Zoning, planning, and code enforcement, Commissioner Moody, public works, parks and recreation, Commissioner Mall, and waste water treatment, Commissioner McNaney.
I don't accept the wastewater treatment plan liaison position.
Is there a motion to approve staff department reports?
I'll make a motion.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do you have any board comments? Do you have any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number 12, is there a motion to approve the public meeting minutes of December 11?
I'll make a motion.
You have a motion, do we have a second? Hold on a second.
I'll make a second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments? Do you have any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Number 13, is there a motion to approve the public meeting minutes of December 18, 2023?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments? Do we have any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number 14, is there a motion to approve payment number one to the Shipsey Electric for the facilities upgrade project in the amount of $22,730.44? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a, the motion, do we have a second? Excuse me.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments? Any public comments? Logan, can you please do a roll call?
President Carter?
Aye.
Vice President Moody?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McNaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Mall?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Number 15, is there a motion to approve payment number two for the facilities upgrade project to SB Conrad in the amount of $44,415?
Motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments? Do you have any public comments? Again, Ms. Logan, can you do a roll call?
President Carter?
Aye.
Vice President Moody?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McNaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Mall?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I'm going to now turn the meeting over to Commissioner Moody, number 16.
Thank you, President Carter. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Merck waiver request for chapter 113-1 and 124-5 for Sunday work hours on Gate 3 Utility Pipe Rack Project. The Sunday work would begin on January 14 through February 25, 2024.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, I'd also like to make a motion to approve the Merck waiver request for chapter 113-1 and 124-5 for Sunday work on B-35 and B-35A demolition project. The Sunday work would begin January 21 through February 4, 2024.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments? Do you have any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
For number 18 on the agenda, I think we have a presentation by Greg Landis with Merck.
Commissioner Moody, as Mr. Landis is coming up front to get himself set up, I just wanted to let everyone know, there was a slight change to the resolution based on a request from the applicant. An additional waiver was added in, and that is section 162-12B2, which normally requires a minimum pipe slope of .005 feet per foot. And applicant has asked for a waiver of that based on existing site conditions. Other than that, the resolution is in a form that was circulated in the board's packets earlier this week and is in a form ready for the board's consideration this evening.
Good evening. My name's Greg Landis. With me is Tom Alvarez from Merck Operations. My pleasure to present to the board tonight. I've been the Merck rep since 1993, so I've done this a number of times and have some history of, of the site. But we're very excited tonight to bring forward our Building 41 lab facility. We have set up the project in the area right here, which is the former home of our original research building that was built in 1955 and has been in service up until it was knocked down in 2021. So the new building will actually replace the existing facility. To orient you where we are, we are south looking north on the Merck property. It's 320 acres. So if you've been to Epcot, Epcot's 300, we're 320. So it's a little bit bigger than that. Sunnytown Pike to the north, West Point Pike to the east, Garfield Avenue to the south, and then Southwood Street to the west. This is an in-shot of the building. It sits well surrounded by larger buildings around it. There's a parking garage to the east which blocks any view of the building as it's constructed or as it will be finished. You, you won't, you literally will not see it. This is a shot from the inside of what the building will look like. It's actually built into an 11-foot embankment, so we have three full stories on half of the building and the rest of the, rest of the building is two stories because we're not building over the dirt. But it's a metal-clad structure, will look very nice inside the building. It's a little lower than the normal buildings. Most of our buildings are 65 feet. This one's 35 feet on the one end and 52 feet on, on the far end. So it's going to sit tucked in there a little bit easier than, than the previous ones. The building will add 110,600 square feet on a footprint of 40,000 square feet. I mentioned the exterior. The use of the building will be for late-stage bioanalytical testing. And what that means is when drugs get to a point of getting into phase three trials, which is one of the last steps, those results have to come back and be analyzed and categorized, documented, and that's what this building will be used for. So it'll be a lot of robotics, a lot of individual samples that are, that are stored and evaluated, and that's what the, that's what we hope the building will, will be able to function as. The building sits about 850 feet off of Sunnytown Pike into the site and then 800 off of West Point Pike. So there's a good bit of distance between the building and the outside community. There'll be about 180 staff running the facility, mostly on day shift. That's a mix of transfers and new employees. We've had some shifts of people out of the existing building when it was taken down, and then employees will come back into this building once it, once it's built. We have addressed on-site parking and connect, we will connect everything to in-plant utilities. Nothing goes out to the street with the exception of natural gas for our emergency generator. We have a little bit of room for landscaping. We've added 11 small trees and 75 shrubs, all PA varieties, which the EAC has looked at. We will require an NPDS permit. We will request that once we have approval of the stormwater plan. We've been through Planning Commission. We've received letters from the county, from RVE, Gilmore and Associates looking at Sanitary Sewer, Van Sennas One, Township Fire Marshal, and the EAC. We believe we've addressed all comments. The Township Engineering comments were specific to stormwater. We have other minor things to look at with Nick, but we will be doing that right after we're finished here. This is the record plan. The record plan lists the nine waivers, which I've detailed on the next slide because there's no way you can read that.
Greg, I'm so sorry. You're, you're debuting a new piece of technology that's very exciting for some of us. So we now have a pointer thanks to our new IT specialist.
Oh, this is, this is amazing.
That works on the screen. So do it again, Greg.
Oh, my goodness, look at this.
Okay, so-
I can point to anything, that's the building.
That's great. Since we had trouble with technology today, I wanted to highlight a positive with technology.
This is, this is really cool. I, I'm enjoying this.
Okay, good. You're the first person that got to use that.
Thank you. So here are the waivers. I've listed them similar to what's on the record plan. We're doing something allowing 15- and 18-inch stormwater pipes. The pipe slope was already mentioned. We are asking to not sign operations and maintenance agreements with the township or to not record the plans with the county because we already have agreements in place with the township for those items. We're combining preliminary and final plans. We are not providing, asking not to provide utility man-made features information within 100 feet of the property line because of the way we're, we're set up internally, and to not provide performance guarantees or maintenance guarantees because of our ongoing working relationship and our billable PO that we keep with, with the township. And then to allow final plan approval without performance and maintenance guarantees. So these are standard ones, with the exception of the pipe slope, these are the standard ones that we ask for on Merck, on Merck projects. So status to date, we met, we started this in October with the PRC. We have submitted our application and been through Planning Commission, and we had our site review with, with them, received their approval, and are here now tonight to ask for your support and approval. And I ask for that with, with the conditions that we expect to have since Nick still has some minor things to do. Are there any questions I can answer?
I don't have any at this time.
All right, so for this application, we have a motion to approve the resolution 02-2024, Merck B-51, the preliminary and final land development project.
So moved.
You have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments?
No.
Do you have any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
You have another presentation.
For number 19, the 825 Morris Road subdivision, are the applicants here tonight?
Yes.
Do you want to make a presentation?
Yes.
Lauren has-
And Commissioner Moody, as the applicant makes his way to the podium, there is likewise a minor change to the approval resolution that was circulated in the board's packets in regard to paragraph 3P, as in Paul, which is on page five of the resolution. That addresses tree replacement fees. In speaking to the applicant's attorney, it's my understanding that the applicant is agreeable to modifying that language slightly so that it includes a not-to-exceed amount of $3,000 in consultation with the township's engineer. He's comfortable with that amount being inserted into the resolution as well.
Can't do much without glasses anymore. My name's Rick Mast. I'm the engineer that prepared the plan for 825 Morris Road, and with me is Robert Wagner, the applicant and the ultimate builder of the new homes as well. And I wanted to start with a little bit of history of the project. As was stated, it's located at 825 Morris Road. It's about a three-acre tract of land, and it's what I would term an infill project in that it's kind of sandwiched between other developments. To the north is a cul-de-sac that was developed, I believe, in the mid-2000s. And to our south, Armstrong Drive, and I'll try the new pointer.
There you go.
Yeah, Armstrong Drive here. This development, I believe, was, was the decade before in the 80s. Our tract is what is in color. The property, again, is about three acres and it's zoned R2 residential, which essentially allows single-family residences to be constructed on lots of a half acre. Lauren, I mean, I'm sorry, Megan, the PDF that I sent you, is that the one that's on the board? And is that sheet two of that PDF? Can you go back to sheet one for a second, please? This is what exists on the property today, and again, the, the outline of the tract is, is this. So there are actually two residences that exist on the tract already. Each of those will be removed. They're not in good condition, they're not appropriate for saving. And there are also two access driveways, one for each of those dwellings, and that's what's shaded in gray. So those dwellings will be removed, and the proposal was for four residential dwellings, so it's a net increase of two over what's there today. Also significant, I think, on this tract is an existing tree row that is on the northern side of the property, which separates the development that I said was mid-2000s and our tract. There are some other scattered trees too, along the property lying on the right side as well. So what's unique about this, and you can go back to page two, Megan, thank you. What's unique about this district as well, is there's an additional section in the zoning ordinance, section 19527, which allows for lot averaging to allow for a greater degree of flexibility in laying out a project of a certain size between two acres and 15 acres. We're three acres, so we fall right within there. So we did meet with the PRC Committee, I think, on two occasions to discuss that. And the feedback that we did get, and also from the neighbors, is the significance of trying to preserve the existing vegetation, particularly that separates the properties to the north. So the lot averaging does allow flexibility, which enables us to preserve those existing trees and that existing tree row. The lot averaging allows us to essentially move our proposed homes more towards the middle of the site, increases the available backyard area, and keeps us away from those trees. So they're all slated to be preserved on the plan. And to provide some meat to that statement, the applicant's attorney and the township solicitor have worked together to develop a declaration, an easement along that property line, which would ensure the preservation and the future preservation of those trees. So it would not permit removal of those trees, and it would require replacement of any trees that were removed. It's my understanding that there's some minor tweaking of that document to determine exactly how the replacement would occur, but in, in concept, I think that the township's consultants and the applicant are in agreement as to how that document would, would proceed. This plan does show the proposed layout. I had mentioned that the two existing dwellings and the two accesses, which are on either side of the tract, would, would be removed. We would replace that with a new privately-owned and maintained roadway. That roadway would be 22 feet wide and have Belgium block curbing along its entirety. And we're also providing it with a turnaround area, and we did work with the fire marshal to get that to be an acceptable radius, acceptable turnaround areas for the emergency vehicles, et cetera. And you can see that we're preserving this tree row on this plan. Stormwater management is collected. We have stormwater management, this piping and inlets throughout the project that collects it on both sides of the tract and directs the stormwater management into a single rain garden detention basin in this location. And that ties directly into the existing storm system that's in the roadway. So there will be no overland discharge from the stormwater management area. It will tie directly into the piping system, which is an important aspect when you're working with a project that is surrounded by existing development. Stormwater management is always a significant concern, so we think we've handled that appropriately by the construction of the inlets, swales, the stormwater basin, and the direct connection to the roadway stormwater management system. The road, Morris Road in this location, is a state highway, so we are required to obtain a highway occupancy permit for the access driveway, for the stormwater management system, since it ties into a state stormwater management system, and any other work that's within the right-of-way. So we have made that application. We received review comments. There were no significant comments in that application. So we'll continue and, and obtain that permit prior to the construction happening. The other outside permits we have are MPDS permits, which we have filed for. Again, we've received a review, we've addressed the review, we've resubmitted it, and are expecting a response to that resubmission in the coming weeks. Again, we didn't feel there were any significant review comments in their response that would significantly alter the proposed design. It is proposed to be serviced with public water by the North Wales Water Authority. The water main is located right in the street, so it's- The water main is located right in the street, so it's just a tap-in and an extension to serve the four homes. We've submitted our plans also to the North Wales Water Authority for review and approval. Sewer is also intended to be public sewer. We're proposing four individual grinder pumps for the proposed residences. There'll be a low, what's called a low-pressure grinder system, which will follow the roadway and then ultimately tie into an existing gravity manhole within Armstrong Drive at that location. I had mentioned we had met with the PRC early on to seek some feedback for the development, but we also met with the Planning Commission, both in September and October. In October, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the project as you see it. And there are a few waivers, which I'll quickly review. Unlike the Merck project, they didn't think about enlarging them, so you could read them, so I'm just going to quickly go through them. Some of them are similar waivers, actually. So, there's a waiver, and I'm going to drop the section numbers if that's okay with the commissioners, but there's a waiver to allow 15-inch storm sewer where 18-inch would normally be required, and that's, all these storm sewer pipes that that would impact are privately-owned. I meant to mention that there will also be a homeowners' association involved for these four lots. That's the entity that'll be responsible for the maintenance of these pipes, and we've submitted calculations to the township engineer to document that they're adequately sized for the flow that's directed to them. Similar to the last project, the second waiver is to allow the plan to be considered, both a preliminary and a final plan. We have addressed, I believe, all of the engineering comments that we received, so in terms of outstanding engineering comments, there's very little comment left to address. I had mentioned that the private road configuration is 22 feet wide with Belgium block curbing and a turnaround area, so we're requesting a waiver of the typical public roadway standards to allow that configuration. Again, we did work with the fire marshal on the configuration, and we also submitted turning templates for the emergency vehicles, just to prove that it was adequately sized to handle those types of vehicles. The next waiver is a similar waiver, but it's with regard to the cul-de-sac configuration. We're proposing a right-of-way of 40 feet for the road and a cartway width of 22 feet. Again, that's for a private roadway, but is less than the standards would be required for a public right-of-way. And again, that goes hand-in-hand with the information we've submitted to show that it would be adequate for emergency vehicles. The next waiver is the use of Belgium block curbing within the cul-de-sac where concrete would ordinarily be required. Technically, it's a waiver, but certainly isn't a reduction in cost for the developer, it's an increase in cost. The only thing I would mention is that since this is a state highway, the curb radii would have to be concrete, because PennDOT won't allow Belgium block curb within their right-of-way because it's not a PennDOT spec. And the very last waiver is with sidewalk. We are requesting a waiver of sidewalk along Morris Road and internal roads, and we understand that there will be a, that's a deferral, not a waiver, but we also understand that there will be a fee in lieu of those. There is no sidewalk to connect to on either side on Morris Road, and internally, there would be the same thing. There wouldn't be a network to tie into. So, in this particular case, we think that the fee in lieu of could be used in a better location in the township than this immediate location. So, I think that's it. I think I've covered everything, but I certainly would be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
You answered my question about the radius of the storm grain and the calculations necessary to go from 18 to 15. Are you envisioning any additional signage at the entrance? No-through traffic, private road, anything like that to indicate to the public this isn't a through-street?
Yes, so there'd be a stop sign, a street-name sign, and a no-through-street sign, or a, yes, no outlet. Thank you. We didn't necessarily contemplate putting in private street, but that's something we would consider as well.
Can you go back to the, where you said the water basin and then Armstrong, in terms of where the water is going to come out? You said it's going to come out of your private road down Morris and over to that inlet?
That was wastewater?
No. I'm losing my pointer here. Okay. So, I will say I'm grateful that, as a colorblind person, I can easily see that dot, and I can't say that about every pointer, so. There were two things I mentioned, and I'll just clarify that. The storm sewer, there's a storm sewer network in the backyards, and what we're trying to ensure with that is that water will not travel through to the existing property. So, we're collecting the stormwater behind the units with inlets and swales. It goes into a common storm system within the private roadway, all to be maintained by the homeowners' association. From there, into the rain garden, and the function of the rain garden is twofold. It's to control the quantity of runoff, so that there's no increase in the rate of runoff from the site. It's also to control water quality, so there will be two feet of filtering planting soil in there. That would be filtered through an underdrain system. It's called a modified release concept basin. And then, from that point, it goes into the existing storm system where it goes today in Morris Road, and then continues in that direction. The ridge of the property in terms of storm sewer is basically our property line, so we're managing all the flow within our property to the point where it goes today, and controlling both the rate and the quality of the runoff with our detention basin. Really, none of the runoff would pass through to the Armstrong properties. What I had mentioned that does go to Armstrong is the sewage flow. This is the closest gravity sewer location, so our sewer does come around and tie in at that point, but that's all subsurface flow within the existing gravity sewer network.
Okay. Thank you.
Item number 16 on page 15, under miscellaneous. It goes on, and I was asking Nick about it earlier. It says changing the rain gardens to an MRC basin. He said that's a managed-release.
Correct.
Basin. So, why, first, why the switch?
The, what dictates the managed-release concept is the existing soil conditions, and it's not something unique to just this property. It's really county-wide. The first attempt to treat stormwater management is through infiltration, where you infiltrate it into the ground. Most of the counties burden with high clay content soils, and they don't infiltrate very well at all. So, DEP has come up with technical guidance on how to make determinations as to what type of a rain garden you would use. So, we've done soil infiltration testing to the density that DEP requires throughout the site, and not unexpectedly, it yielded very limited infiltration capability on the property. And I'll give you a little stormwater history, and when we first started doing water-quality basins, the regulations tended to force you into trying to infiltrate into soils that really couldn't accept it, and it really created a lot of issues with stormwater basins. They would not infiltrate the way they were intended to. There would be a lot of standing water. The plants would die, you know, neighbors would start to complain because they were concerned about West Nile virus or something like that. So, this managed-release concept is really to address those types of situations that exist, you know, in our general area. So, to achieve this, it's designed to really mimic how it would operate if it had infiltrations. So, there's a minimum of two feet of planting soil. It's a certain specification that will filter the stormwater runoff, and there's some very specific calculations that we have to do, so that it's not overburdened as well, and that's kind of all, the guidelines are all set by DEP. And then, ultimately, it's discharged to the storm sewer. So, I guess the answer, the simple answer to your question is really it's the infiltration data that we obtained on the site that dictated the use of the managed-release concept. And on top of the township, we'll also have to get the county, and that's who's delegated to handle the DEP regulations, to approve the stormwater management design also.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to confirm that you are working on the name, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
As I understand, is the request.
Any other word? Any other word?
Any other word?
Got that, right.
Any questions from the public? Rebecca?
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the Resolution 03-2024, Preliminary/Final Land Development for 825 Morris Road, the four-lot subdivision.
We have a motion for Resolution 03-2024. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any more board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
The last item in the zoning, planning, and code enforcement, Section Number 20, a motion to approve the encroachment onto storm and sanitary sewer easement agreement for 605 Roosevelt Court.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Hall, you don't have anything in your section this evening? Is there anything you'd like to share?
I would. I do have a few public safety tidbits I thought I'd share this evening. First of all, I don't know if you've heard, but there was a water main break on the block of 100 block of Church Road, so that's right by the Joy Dry Cleaners, as well as, the name of the gas station. Oh, my gosh, wow. Senior moment, sorry. As well as the Royal Farms gas station is right there as well. So, if you are a resident who is living right there, especially at the park at West Point, those apartments, you're going to be having water problems for a while. They have closed off the road between Becker and Needler Road. This was about three hours ago, so perhaps they fixed it, but if you're out and about, I would suggest just avoiding that area, just an FYI. Another tidbit, public safety tidbit, from the Upper Gwinnett Police Department, is that they recently announced that they have a new officer who has been assigned as special needs coordinator, and again, I'm sure I'm going to butcher her name, but I'm going to go for it. So, I'd like to announce that Officer Alyssa Bonano has been assigned as our new special needs coordinator. This was originally, Matt Toro was the first police officer who had that role. He then, as we all know, became very involved with the K-9 unit, so it was passed on to Officer Montana Lighthart, but he is moving on, and so we are super excited to pass the torch on. And you may ask yourself, what will Officer Bonano be doing in this role? And they include maintaining our confidential special needs registry, distributing the blue envelopes available at the station, arranging station tours for special needs persons and groups, and being our representative for the PA Law Enforcement Torch Run for Special Olympics. So, this is just another great area of our police department that is pretty unknown, that we have, our police department has worked hard to develop their special needs unit, so I did want to share that information. And last, but definitely not least, our Upper Gwinnett Fire Department is having a fundraiser. They are having a trivia night on a great day of the year, January 27th. It's a Saturday this year, at 6:00 PM at the fire department. It's $30 a person or $200 a table, and all of the proceeds from that trivia night, brought to you by the Quiz-O Guys, will go to the fire department, which is a completely volunteer organization. Thank you so much, Commissioner Carter.
Now, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Commissioner Mall.
Good evening. We have a motion to authorize the advertisement of a bid for the West Prospect Avenue Drainage Project. You can see it's item number 21. This project is going to alleviate stormwater runoff issues along West Prospect Avenue between Sumny Town and Highland Avenue by installing storm infrastructure, which does not currently exist. Do I have a motion? I would like to make that motion. I'll make a motion to approve the authorizing of a bid for this project.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments? Do we have any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Now, going to turn the meeting over to Commissioner McNaney.
I decline to take the liaison for wastewater, so I will not.
Is there a motion to approve the proposal by BSI Electrical Contractors to install level sensors for the aeration tank emollient channel in the amount of $11,675? We have a motion? We have a second?
All second.
We have a motion and a second. Do you have any board comments? Do we have any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Is there a motion to approve the proposal by BSI Electrical Contractors for programming SCADA development for the effluent distribution box in the amount of $13,820?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments? Do you have any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Number 24, is there a motion to approve the January 2024 open invoices?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments? Do we have any public comments? Logan, can you please complete the roll call?
President Carter?
Aye.
Vice President Moody?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McNaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Mall?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Number 25, is there a motion to approve the January 2024 paid invoices?
Make a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments? Do you have any public comments? Again, Ms. Logan, can you please complete the roll call?
President Carter?
Aye.
Vice President Moody?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McNaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Mall?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Number 26.
Call for adjournment.
Please adjourn, thank you, and have a good evening.